There's a flag in there.
Huh?
Yeah? Over there in the corner. Well, I think you're saying.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Where is everyone?
Not much on your gym.
Good morning, welcome to the May 12th Board of Supervisors meeting of Tulare County. Would you please stand with me and as we salute the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you can sit down. We are sitting today as the Tulare County Board of Supervisors as well as the Tulare County Redevelopment Agency at this time, and I'm sure my board is surprised we do not have a line of presentations lined up today. They're all coming next time. We would like to have anybody wishing to address the board on an item that's not on the calendar, so this is public comment time. Anyone wishing to address the board, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will move to item number two, which is Board of Supervisors matters, and I will look to my left, Supervisor Vanderpool.
I really don't have much to talk about this week, except I do want to mention that tonight at five o'clock at the Government Plaza on Mooney Boulevard is the Mental Health Art Show, Art Expression Show, so please attend that opening, and that should be a very nice event, so just wanted to point that out.
It is every year, wonderful art show. Supervisor Worthley.
I had nothing this morning.
Supervisor Ashida.
We've had several meetings on the new Farmworker Agricultural Museum in the last week, and we expect that building to be completed with approximately September 15th, and we'll open the museum somewhere late November to the middle of December. So, it's right around the corner, and if you have a chance to go to Mooney's Grove and just look at the steel structure, it's becoming a reality.
Moving quickly, isn't it? Supervisor Innes.
Yeah, I'd like to just say a few comments. Last week Supervisor Vanderpool and Kristen Bennett and I went up to Big Creek as guests of Edison Company once more, and of course I get pretty enthused when I go up there and talk to John Mount, the forest, their forester and their manager, their forest, they're 20,000 acres. It's just a beautiful area, the plan they use is just primo, and to think that they're pulling as much lumber out of that per year as we're pulling out of the whole Sierra Nevada Mountains. We've got 2,000 trees to the acre in some places up here, you need to have like 60. I think we can stop calling it a watershed, because you're not going to be shedding any water, you've got that many trees to the acre. So that's just a common sense deal, but hopefully some way, somehow, we're going to get through to these people that you need a management plan in the mountain that's going to work and prevent these catastrophic fires, because if we don't, all we're going to have is moonscape. We're finding that out when we have these catastrophic fires in these mountain areas, moonscape. So, just thought I'd bring that to the attention of everybody, and that's something that I kind of push for constantly, and hopefully someday, if we talk enough, we'll get maybe some sense through some peoples into their minds, I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on something Supervisor Ashida said about our new museum building that's being built, committees have been formed to work and plan on the interior design, the contents, the layout, the telling of the story. This looks to be a very exciting process that we've entered into here with the Historical Society, Tulare County Office of Education, and I'm sure there's going to be other partners and other people already have requested to be involved with this, so very exciting process. We will now move to our consent calendar. Item 15 is off calendar, and will be brought back at a later date. Board, is there any other items that need to be moved or considered under separate consideration? Anybody from the public wishing to pull a consent calendar item? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I'd move for approval, items three through 18, less item 15.
I'll second that.
Moved by Innes, second by Vanderpool, please cast your votes. It is a unanimous vote, thank you very much, Board. We have a couple of untimed items. Item number 19 is a request from Health and Human Service Agency to approve and authorize personnel resolution regarding a reorganization. Mr. Davis.
Morning Supervisors, John Davis, Health and Human Services Agency. As your board is painfully aware, in the last quarter, we have adjusted our staffing. This affected about 460 positions that were eliminated, and about 223 staff were either found employment or were separated from employment. And the point in bringing that up is simply that this was a very large and significant change for the agency, and we knew going in there'd be problems or some difficulties, because when you make this many changes and that many people are moving across the agency, it creates a lot of unknowns. We have about six positions here that we actually are asking your board to kind of do the final cleanup before we actually enter into the budget process and look at what we've got for next year. And we're asking for an administrative aide. The administrative aide was a position we had with our medical director, and somewhere in that shuffle, we ended up with a OA4 instead of an administrative aide, so we'd like to correct that problem, and that's one of the things addressed. We have a supervising nurse, and we could do with just a lead nurse, and that's another one we could just adjust. We're asking too that your board approve an aging services manager. This is part of a change that's been taking place in the governing board for the Area Agency on Aging. We're trying very hard to line up just the administrative positions for the Area Agency on Aging as Kings County begins to assume the programs that are in Kings County and Tulare County starts to settle out those programs that are just for Tulare County. This will make it very clear, since there'll only be about six staff, or seven staff, actually driving the administration and the phone lines essentially for the Area Agency on Aging, and make it very clear to both counties what's program and what's not. So that's a clarification, and we'd like to get that in place before we get all the contracts in place with Kings County, so we know that they have the money that we've told them they have. And with that, I think we've pretty much covered, I think, most of the issues that we know are wrong now, and we'd like to get straightened out, get ready, and then enter into the budget process, which the CAO has already launched, as you know. So we'd ask your board to approve this item, and if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
The only thing I see as I look at the, I don't even know what you form you call us, 308 or whatever, it looks like even affecting all these positions, there's only a net change of $3,600.
That's true, and for this quarter, next year it'll be $12,000 over the course of the whole year.
The whole year?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Entertain a motion?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved by Worthley, second by Ashida. Pass unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item. Item number 20 is a request from RMA to consider a zone change initiation, PZI 08005.
Good morning Chairman Cox and fellow supervisors. My name's Mike Washam, I'm a planner with Tulare County RMA, and today I bring before the board a request to deny zone change initiation, PZI 08005, to proceed as an application for a zone change which would change the zone designation from AE Exclusive Agriculture to C3 Service Commercial on the subject site. In 2004, your board adopted interim procedures for initiation, filing and processing applications to amend zoning ordinance during this update of the general plan process, and to prevent potential conflicts between the forthcoming general plan and zoning ordinance, and this area, or this PZI process is applied to areas not located within any urban development boundary, such as the site is on this particular case. The subject site is located on the east side of State Highway 245 at its intersection with Avenue 328, approximately one mile south of the city of Woodlake. The two and a half acre site is approximately a half a mile south of the Woodlake UAB, it has a designation of agriculture and is subject to the RVLP. The subject site and the surrounding area is zoned AE Exclusive Agriculture, and then further out, it's zoned AE40. The site currently has a code violation for operating an auto repair business in the AE zone. In the applicant's letter requesting this zone change, he indicated he is pursuing this to allow his tenant to continue operating his business. However, he's also included in the request the vacant lot to the south of the auto repair business. A letter was sent to Mr. Howell, the applicant, indicating approval for such a zone change was not likely, however, that while there was no guarantee of approval, applying for a special use permit for rural home occupation to allow his tenant to continue the auto repair business may provide a better chance of success. Mr. Howell responded that it was his intention and desire to continue with the original request for a zone change from AE to C3 on his two parcels. This aerial map is approximately three quarters of a mile from side to side. The site consists of two parcels, the north parcel, which contains the auto repair business, and the vacant southern parcel, which is also included in this request. There are orchards located to the northwest and the southeast, or west of the site. There's field crops to the east and the south of the site. A cattle feed lot, including the associated evaporative lagoons, is located adjacent to the east and southeast of the lot. On the southwest corner of Highway 245, I'm sorry, and Avenue 328, is a historic St. John's Elementary School, which has been converted to a dog training kennel facility. Approximately 300 feet north of the site is a parcel being used for raising poultry, and there are goats, horses, and other animals located to the south and to the west of the site. All of these uses are consistent with the AE zoning, which is currently on the site. The northern parcel contains currently a family residence with an attached garage, the auto repair business is being conducted in that garage. A 2,400 square foot auxiliary building with an interior office and bathroom facilities and an additional carport structure are behind the home and garage. You can see the cattle feed lot adjacent right to the, right up against the eastern boundary of that lot. The southern parcel is fenced, it appears to provide additional access to the auxiliary building, but it contains no structure and is vacant. Pursuant to the RVLP, the subject site scored 14 points, which indicates it's in the gray area, that the Board of Supervisors shall make a decision based on the unique circumstances pertaining to the particular parcel of land. Converting this site from agricultural to commercial uses will have impacting the neighboring agricultural parcels. The feed lot that abuts the parcel and the other agricultural operations in the media area creates inharmonious uses with the service commercial zone. Now, the C3 zone is just, that goes with the land, so by right, if this were to be converted to C3 and the owner were to sell it, by right, there's certain uses in the C3, C2, C1, R3, and R2, and R1 would all be by right available uses for that land if it were to be approved and changed. The county has adopted many plans and policies and goals in an effort to reduce the premature conversion of agricultural land to urban development, and the staff report outlines about nine of these policies. These preservation policies were developed with intent of protecting agricultural land on urban fringes. Urban development at this site will impinge upon the current and future agricultural uses in the area. There's alternatives, your board could use your discretionary power to approve the zone change initiation, despite the inconsistencies with the existing and proposed general plan policies, or pursuant to the PZI process itself, you could refer this matter to the Planning Commission for Recommendation prior to making a decision. The proposed changes of zone does not further the goals, objectives, and policies adopted to Tulare County General Plan or the Proposed General Plan 2030. Although this area may at some time become appropriate for urban development, at this time, no public purpose could be served by allowing the requested zone change. Therefore, RMA requests that the Board of Supervisors deny PZI 08005 to proceed as an application for a zone change. Denial of this PZI does not preclude the applicant or his tenant to apply for a special use permit for rural home occupation that could potentially allow his auto business to continue to operate. This concludes staff report. I have additional photos if you'd like, or if you have any questions. Thanks.
Any questions of staff? Seeing none, this is not listed as a public hearing, but if there's someone here that would like to address the board on this matter, we'll hear you now. Please step to the mic and state your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, while this gentleman's coming forward, I wanted to disclose that I did have a telephone conversation yesterday afternoon with Mr. Howell, and talked mainly about procedures, there was no new information given that's not provided in the staff report, and I have not spoken to any supervisors about that conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worthley. I'm Chad Howell. Address, is that where?
Address, please.
250 North C Street in Exeter. I'm here today, I mean, obviously, I'm not as prepared as Michael Washam, and that's a great presentation. Basically, I'm here with my hat in my hands, just looking for a way to make this work. My customer, or my tenant, Chris Bolinger, has been residing in the residence there for about a year, up until the point where he started this garage, he did struggle to make his rent check payments each month, and then he went through all the legal process with the state to get licensed and his EPA clearance and things for oil disposal and that, so to take, you know, do what he needed to do to start a little mechanic shop there, and since then, he has been much more consistent in his rents per month, and that's been something that's favorable, obviously, to me. I do own the entire two and a half acres there that Michael pointed out in the shaded area. That is all I own, so there is no adjoining piece that would be, you know, significantly larger that would sell if I was to sell that piece, so I don't know if that makes a difference at all or not, but the thought here is, is you have two families that are being supported by an entrepreneur's business that's just happens to be in his front yard and happens to be just a mile south of the Woodlake, you know, greater town, you know, is far beyond our intention to do anything besides just run this small garage. I am a general building contractor, I store some things in the back shop there that came up on the picture, however, the portion that I rent to Chris is just that front home and garage that's there and located in the front, so.
So if I can correct, the large metal building we saw then is not what he's running?
That is not what he's operating out of, he's only operating out of the two-car garage that's on the front of the property. It's two pieces of property, they're about an acre and a quarter a piece, which makes up the whole, the one bare land piece on the right, and then the piece with the house and the shop on the left. However, I just rent to Chris that front portion with the house on it, and an enclosed area by the fence that's surrounded, surrounding a pool in the backyard, so everything beyond that, so roughly, you know, an acre and three quarters is what I use for my uses, so. There is a couple of things in the conversation I has had with Mr. Worthley yesterday that we came up then, and I had Chris go back through his records, and he did come up with about six or seven work orders from the first of the year of farmers and individuals that work for farmers, him working on their vehicles there in that local area, and also some work that he's done for the city of Exeter on one of their vehicles that nobody else in the area could repair, so a double head gasket change out on a vehicle totaling about $1,000 worth of labor, or, you know, parts and labor. But anyhow, just, you know, just to present that, that he is supporting the local agriculture community by working on some of the vehicles that they do have problems with over the, and these are just ones from since the first of the year. So, I guess that's basically what I have to present. At this point, if Mr. Bolinger was disallowed to continue his business, it would put him in a state of poverty very quickly, because, you know, as we all know, jobs are very hard to come by at this time, and that would in turn put me in a difficult position to, you know, have to, you know, get rid of him as a tenant at this point if he was not able to continue to make his rent, so I just, at the mercy of your guys' decision, to see whether this is something that could actually proceed, or, you know, if there's an alternative way, but certainly this would be an all encompassing decision if we were to go with something like the C3 changeover that would, you know, allow his entrepreneurship to continue, and I'm certainly in support of that as the landlord and the landlord at this point, so.
Yes, stick around, we have some questions.
I have a question for you, Mr. Howell. I was just wondering, I know that Mike mentioned that you can apply for a special use permit in order to operate, I believe it's, I don't know what the proper terminology was that you used.
Rural home occupation.
Rural home occupation, and have you ever, did you actually consider that, or?
In the beginning, when we solicited, or we went down to the RMA originally, they said, why don't you apply for a zone change? This is what, this is the way we would recommend that you go about that, so we invested, you know, a fair amount of money, I think nearly $2,000 at that point, and started that process. Within that process, the letter that Michael referred to in the conversations that he and I had over the phone, where he said, I don't think this is going to go, you meet 14 of the 17 criteria, you fall in the gray area. For me, it was like, well, hey, I'm optimistic, you know, there's 14 of the 17, we've already invested nearly $2,000 at this point, let's just proceed and see what happens, you know, because at that point, he was saying, why don't you switch and go for a special use permit? And I guess my thought is if we can, you know, take the step to the C3, that would be kind of an all encompassing step, rather than, a special use permit would be more on an individualistic basis, you know, if it was just the garage, say, two years down the road, I wanted to open a cabinet shop in the back or whatever, then I would have to go and apply for a secondary special use permit, whereas if we were to attain the C3 at this point, it would be all encompassing, I guess, is the thought.
Do you have any intentions for further commercial use on the property?
For me, right now, it's just, I store tools there, I don't actually function there, I don't even have a sign hung out, too. It's kind of like the contractor shop in the back where he parks his trucks, you know, so that's what it's, that's where it's at now.
Thank you.
There is, you know, there is a possibility in the future that something like that would come up, but.
Any other questions?
No, I just would share with the board what I shared with Mr. Howell yesterday, which has been that the board has historically been very supportive of protecting agricultural property, and even though this falls in the discretionary range for action, it's been my experience at the board as side of the agriculture in those circumstances, rather than making the zone change, and I think the point was well made by staff, that once a zone change is made, then it lasts, it goes with the property, there are many different kinds of uses that can be made under that designation, that may be, in this case, for instance, it may not necessarily be contrary to agricultural uses, but other uses under C3 could be very much in difficulty with agricultural uses, so I think it's not been the board's historic perspective to make these kinds of adjustments, but I did explain to him something about special uses, which I think may have alleviated some of his concerns, because I think initially he thought maybe he had to do that on an ongoing basis, you know, like having a group of people come and have to have a special use permit for every event, and I explained to him that, no, these are circumstances that if they're granted, they go with the person and the business as long as the business is operating, and also that there might be the need for him to consider filing a use permit that would allow him to have a contractor's storage yard at the same time and cover all of his bases, so I personally think that would be the preferred approach for him to take. I think if we were to take the position of giving these kinds of changes to zoning out in the rural parts of the county, because they happen to be small parcels and because they happen to have home occupations, Katie barred the door, because there would be so many, I don't know how we would handle them, and I think we'd have a lot of problems with trying to sustain our agricultural uses, so that was basically the crux of my conversation with him yesterday, and I don't, I haven't heard anything that would really sway me to think differently this morning.
Anybody else?
I tend to agree with Supervisor Worthley, you know, the, Mr. Bolinger appeared to know what it took to get his state licensing and get everything lined up, and I don't know if he chose to ignore the proper land use, but somehow left that piece out, so I kind of agree that the special use permit would be the way to go, especially looking at where this would be happening, the close proximity to the other agricultural uses, so I tend to agree with staff that probably the special use permit would be the way that I could probably support.
One of the issues that was brought up yesterday in our conversation, too, was the money that expended in this process, and I said, I'm not sure, but perhaps staff might be able to respond that perhaps the work that's been done, seeking a general plan application, change of zone plan, might be useful, a lot of those, that information would be useful in terms of special use permit process, so there would not necessarily be a loss of fund, but rather it would be, could be used in that regard, is that, is there any?
Yes, yes Supervisor. In the letter that we sent to him in January, we indicated to ensure an equitable resolution that we would apply the time spent and refund the PZI fees and transfer them over to the special use, so for, we're not here trying to shut down, and we're for, but we wanted appropriate uses, so.
And how much longer does that process take?
Well, there's indications now that you're talking possibly about including a contractor's storage yard as well, so that would, that would be starting a little bit additional matters on that, but as far as what we have here, we can go forward with it pretty quick. I'm sure that, I can't speak for code compliance, but usually when they're in the process, they kind of delay and wait for the outcome, so I don't think there's going to be a cease and desist type of situation on the property.
So Mr. Bolinger would be allowed to continue his business?
Provided we're going forward with the application process.
Any other questions?
That would be very helpful, so, you know, there's not a stop, you know, stop dead type of situation.
No other questions, I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we support the, deny the request by staff.
Second.
Motion by Worthley, seconded by Ashida. Unanimous, so I think you have your instructions. We do have an addendum, untimed item. We do have an addendum, untimed item number one. Mr. Summers, did you want to speak to this or have someone speak to this? I know it's an information only item, but I think it's good information that we ought to highlight.
Brian Summers, Senior Capital Projects Coordinator. Yes, it turned out to be very good information. This is kind of one of those situations I've discussed in the past where, you know, with the current economic situation, what may be very bad for the economy ends up being somewhat good for us. And this is definitely an indication. We had a consultant's estimate of about five hundred thousand dollars for the government plaza roofing project, which had been downscaled from an initial estimate prepared about a year and a half, two years ago by several hundred thousand dollars. And when we opened bids last Wednesday, we're pleasantly surprised with A, the number of bidders, and B, the low bids that we received. So we're reviewing, doing due diligence right now. And hopefully, we'll be able to bring an item to award to your Board next week.
And this is a re-roof and not a liquid coating?
That is correct. Full tear off and re-roof.
That's kind of what we did last time is we poured a little layer of liquid on it that had a three-year life and.
And that's almost exactly what we got out of it.
At three years and one day, it started leaking.
I'm curious, do you recall what we paid for that when we did it? Off the top of your head?
Total cost, we did it in two stages. We coated one side and then came back several months later, coated the other side. Both sides combined were, if I remember correctly, somewhere in the three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. So we coated for more than we're going to be able to re-roof in the span of three and a half years. Quite a, quite a shift in the industry there.
And that's why I wanted to have him come up because we, in the future, it might make us look a little bit more closely at how we approach these re-roofs. By having worked on re-roofing projects for probably twenty years, about seven or eight years back, noticed the coating was one of the hot ticket items of the day and promises were made, oh, you're going to have at least three years with no leak. And literally three years and a day after the product's applied, the leaks start popping up. So I, again, you know, we're seeing as we go out to bid on construction projects of any kind, we're getting a very good bang for our buck today.
Mr. Chairman, my recollection was, because we did investigate that at the time, and I believe it was about a million dollar estimate to repair that, to replace that.
Eight hundred to a million was the initial estimate. We revised it down a little bit, but then last year revised it down even farther and did a little further revision here right before we went out to bid. And we're very pleasantly surprised. And I agree and I share your concern, you know, hindsight being what it is generally twenty twenty, I think we definitely would have tried to take a different approach three years ago. But at the same time, the economic conditions were so drastically different between three years ago and those conditions today that hard to foresee that.
And I know our HHSA folks were happy not to see tents with hoses attached to them for the leaks that were in the ceiling before. So this is, I just think this shows that we ought to be, you know, the construction dollars that we have today set aside, we ought to be pushing as much forward as we can today, which accomplishes two things. It gets the projects done sooner and we pick up a good bang for the buck and it pushes money out into the community that so much needs it.
Mr. Chairman, if I remember right, you walked that roof.
Oh, and that's, that's a roofer's dream is it's a field of nothing, very few penetrations. You can, you know, a lot of roofs you go out and there's a hole every ten or fifteen feet, which makes it very difficult to seal. This roof here, you look across it, it's like a field of snow. It's beautiful. A roofer's dream.
You'd be wise and beholden.
Okay, I've rec. I've talked enough. Counsel, thank you, Mr. Summers. Counsel, we do have closed session items and some might be off. Would you like to tell us what we're going to be addressing this morning?
I wish I could tell you that any more off, but once again, second we can row, none off. Items A through K on your Board's regular closed session and addendum closed session. I do not anticipate any announcements.
Thank you. Well, we'll adjourn to closed session.